Now before starting the next few problems sir, let us understand the concept. Now what this concept is about? This concept is about the concept of two people meeting at a certain point. Now this concept, I call it as a meeting point concept. Please listen to this very, very carefully. We will understand the concept and then once we understand the concept, problems will be very, very simple for you people to solve it. Meeting point concept is what we are discussing right now. Now see here, I will take an example also, I will also generalize and tell it. Both the things I will try to solve it are teach you by diagrams so that it will be easy for you people to understand. Now suppose for example, assume that there is a city called as P here, right? There is a city called as P for example and there is another city called as Q here, right? There is a city called as P, there is a city called as Q. Now, this distance is nothing but PQ, right? The distance from city P to city Q is nothing but a distance called as PQ. Now, there is one person called as person A. This person A is starting from city P and he is traveling to city Q at a speed of S1 km/h, right? He is starting from city P and he is traveling to city Q at a speed of S1 km/h. There is another person called as B. Person B is starting from city Q and he is traveling to city P at a speed of S2 km/h for example. Now these are general values S1 and S2. If you want it to be a numerical value for your better understanding, same to same you will understand on the right hand side here. There is a city called as P, there is a city called as Q, right? There is a city called as P, there is a city called as Q. Now, this person called as A, assume that he is traveling at a speed of 40 km/h from city P to city Q. There is another person called as B, he is traveling from city Q to city P at a speed somewhere around 50 km/h. Let us take it an example. Now, right hand side is for your better understanding through numerical values. Left hand side is the generalized version of the meeting point concept. So that we will generalize it and we will use it in problems. Now see here, when the person A is traveling from city P to city Q, first of all, the condition in both the things whatever have written on the right hand side or left hand side is both A and B are starting from their respective places at the same time. That means if A is starting at 9 o'clock for example in the morning from P, B is also starting at same time 9 o'clock in the morning from Q, right? That is the meaning of this. Now, I can say that suppose for example, this person A has started from city P. He keeps on traveling like this and city Q also B has started. He also keeps on traveling like this. When they are traveling, 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 traveling like that, at some point of a time they both will meet, right? At some point of a time they both will meet. Assume that they both will meet at a point called as R. I will call that as city R for example. Please pay complete attention. This generalization is very, very important for next four to five very beautiful questions. They both are meeting at a point called as R, I will call that as city R for example. Here also let us take that as the city R and this is the distance traveled by A from A, sorry, from A, from city P to city R and this is the distance traveled by the person B from city Q to city R. Here also, A has traveled a distance of PR and B has traveled a distance of QR. I hope till this point there is no doubt. And because right hand side diagram is the numerical value example, let us say that they both will meet at 3pm, right? Let us say that they both will meet at 3pm. Now, so in this generalized case, here A is traveling from, what do you say? P to R, here B is traveling from Q to R. I hope you are very clear till this point without any doubts. Now see here, let us continue further. In the right hand side numerical value example, I told that they both met after some hours. That means they both met at 3 o'clock. They started their journey at 9 o'clock. A has started his journey at 9 o'clock and he met another person at 3 o'clock. From 9 o'clock to 3 o'clock, there is a gap of 6 hours. That means they are meeting after how many hours? They are meeting after 6 hours if I take a numerical value. Similarly, so that means A has basically traveled for 6 hours. The person B, person B also started at 9 o'clock. He also met another person at city R at 3 o'clock itself. That means B also has traveled for 6 hours and they both met after 6 hours. Now, this is a numerical value example, but if I generalize it, let us take that they both meet after some T hours, right? They both meet after T hours. In the example whatever I have taken on the right hand side, instead of T, it is nothing but 6 hours. From 9 o'clock to 3 o'clock, it is 6 hours. But in the generalized case, we don't know what is that. I am just assuming it as a general case as T hours. So till this point, I believe there is no doubt for any student listening to the class. Now, can I say that, let us calculate like this. Let us think that in 1 hour, the speed of A is in 1 hour, he will travel a distance of 40 km. But from 9 o'clock to 6 o'clock, he has traveled for 6 hours. In 1 hour, it is 40. In 6 hours, he has traveled a distance of 40 into 6 km. Similarly, in 1 hour, B will cover 50 km. He has also traveled from 9 o'clock to 3 o'clock for 6 hours. In 1 hour, he will cover 50. In 6 hours, he has covered 50 into 6 km. That means, can I say that the distance traveled by A from P to R and the distance traveled by B from Q to R, it is nothing but equal to 40 into 6 divided by 50 into 6. And if I take the ratio, 6 will cancel. 40 divided by 50 is nothing but 4 divided by 5. And 4 by 5 is nothing but the speed of 2 people A and B. Speed of A and the speed of B, it is 40 divided by 50 km/h. 40 by 50 ratio is once again 4 ish to 5. So it is very, very simple concept. Because the time taken by both A and B is constant. A is also taking 6 hours to meet B. B is also traveling for the same 6 hours to meet A. Time is constant. If the time is constant, speed and distance are directly proportional to each other. Whatever you get the distance ratio, same thing will be the ratio of the speeds. I hope you are very, very clear with the numerical values what I have taken. Distance ratio and the speed ratio will be directly proportional to each other because the time is constant. Same thing, whatever we have taken as a numerical example and told 6 hours all those things on the right side of the screen, let us now generalize it on the left side of the screen. So can I say that, can I say that the distance traveled from P to Q, the distance, sorry, P to R not P to Q, the distance traveled from P to R, it is nothing but, who is traveling from P to R? A is traveling from P to R and he is traveling at a speed of S1 km/h. How much distance he has traveled there? He has traveled a distance of something which we will find it out right now. Similarly, distance traveled from Q to R is also some distance which we will find it. But let us now consider the case. Now till now whatever we have discussed is the case at the point of meeting, at the meeting point. How much distance will they travel after the meeting point? Let us use a different color so that it will be very clear for you. Now, A has traveled from P to R like this and after meeting Q, after meeting B at the point R, he will continue his journey to Q, right? He will continue his journey to Q. Similarly, B has traveled from Q to R like this. B has traveled from Q to R like this. After meeting A at R, he will also continue the journey like this. That means A will continue his journey like this. B will also continue the journey like this after their meeting, right? After their meeting. How much distance will A cover from R to Q? A will cover from R to Q. How much distance? Suppose for example, distance, we know the distance is equal to speed into time. Speed of A, A is traveling from R to Q. Speed of A is nothing but S1 km/h. And we don't know the time taken by A. Let us take the time taken by A as T1 hours. Similarly, so the distance traveled from R to Q from A is S1 into T1. Similarly, how much time will B take to cover from R to P? It is nothing but distance is equal to speed into time. Distance of B is S2 and time taken by B, we don't know. Let us consider that he will take T2 hours. So the distance from R to P is how much? S2 into P2, let us write it. Let us generalize. PR distance is nothing but from P to R, it is S2 into T2 is the distance. I hope you are understanding. Similarly, from R to Q or from Q to R, whatever it is, both are same. The distance is S1 into T1, right? The distance is S1 into T1. Now, you might ask me a question, what is this T1 and T2? T1 and T2 are the time taken by 2 people A and B respectively after meeting. After meeting, the time taken by A and B to reach their respective destinations is nothing but T1 and T2. If you want, I will really write it and do not get confused. After meeting, let me write it so that it will be super clear for you. Let me take little bit of extra time to explain that is completely okay, but you should understand it thoroughly. After meeting, they both will take, they both will take times of, they both will take times of T1 and T2 hours, time to reach their respective destinations. T1 and T2 time to reach their respective destinations. I hope you are very, very clear with this. T1 and T2 are the timeframes taken by 2 peoples A and B to reach their respective destinations after meeting. That is very, very important. The most important statement or the word is after meeting. I hope till this is very clear. Now, from the diagram or from the right hand side explanation, we came to know that the distance ratio is absolutely proportional, directly proportional to the speed ratio. Now, can I say that the distance ratio, distance traveled from P to R, distance traveled from P to R, who is traveling initially this distance from P to R? A is traveling this and he is traveling with a speed of S1. Distance traveled from P to R and the distance traveled from R to Q or from Q to R rather. So from Q to R, who is traveling initially? B is traveling and he is traveling at a speed of S2. This distance ratio is directly proportional to the speed ratio, S1 divided by S2. Where S1 is the speed of A traveling from P to R initially and S2 is the speed of B traveling from Q to R initially. But we know that PR by QR, PR by QR is nothing but S2 T2 divided by S1 T1. S2 T2 divided by S1 T1. So if I cross multiply S1 by S2 and here S2 by S1 will cross multiply, it becomes S1 square by S2 square is equal to T2 by T1. Very, very important point. We can generalize it saying as S1 divided by S2, the speed ratios of 2 people A and B is nothing but equal to the reciprocal, the square root of the reciprocal of the time taken by those 2 peoples after their meeting. So S1 by S2 is equal to square root of D2 by T1. Very, very important point which I have proved it also. And what is this T1 and T2? I have very clearly mentioned here also. The T1 and T2 are nothing but after they both are meeting, they will take a timeframe of T1 and T2 respectively to reach their destinations. That is nothing but T1 and T2. What is S1 by S2? S1 and S2 are nothing but the speeds of 2 people A and B respectively. And I have very, very clearly explained you that if the time is constant, speed ratio and distance ratio are directly proportional to each other, which is very beautifully explained by taking right hand side numerical value example and I have proved it as well. Now, you might also get one more scenario doubt here. What is that sir, you said that they meet after T hours, right sir? How to calculate that T value? That is my next explanation which I will do it right now itself. That means from A to, sorry, from P to R, A is traveling and A has traveled a distance of T hours before meeting, right? A has traveled a distance of how many hours? T hours. Similarly, from Q to R, B has traveled. B has also traveled a distance of how many hours? T hours. This T hours is nothing but 6 hours in my right hand side example. From 9 o'clock to 3 o'clock, it is 6 hours. From 9 o'clock to 6, 3 o'clock here also, it is 6 hours. And we are calculating that value of 6 generally. In a general scenario, we are calculating that value of 6. That 6 only, I call it as a T hours in general. How to calculate that T hours? It is very, very simple. Now, we also know that, we also know that how to calculate T? We know that time is equal to distance by speed, right? Time is equal to distance by speed. Now, can I say that time taken from A to, sorry, P to R, time taken from P to R is nothing but, I will call that a time as a small letter T for example. And distance traveled from P to R by A, it is nothing but S2 into T2. A is traveling a distance of S2 into T2 from P to R. And distance by speed, speed at which A is traveling from P to R is nothing but how much speed? It is S1. So T is nothing but S2 by S1 into T2. S2 by S1, we can easily calculate this S2 by S1. S1 by S2 is root of T2 by T1. S2 by S1 is reverse, it is root of T1 by T2. So I can write it as root T1 divided by root T2. And this T2, I will write it as T, right? This T2, I will write it as T. So finally, if I simplify, root T2, T2 divided by root T2, it is root of T2 in the numerator. And we have already root of T1. So root of T1 into root of T2. So final answer will be root of T1 into T2. That means the time taken before the meeting, the time taken before the meeting, that means A has traveled from P to R. How much time did A travel from P to R? He has taken a time of root of T1 into T2. Similarly, B has traveled from Q to R before they met. How much time had B traveled from Q to R? He has also traveled a time of, traveled for a time period of root of T1 into T2. So that is what we have calculated right now in the right side bottom of the screen which I have written in red ink. I hope it is very clear for all the students. Just to summarize it in 1 minute in a nutshell, S1 by S2 ratio is nothing but root of T2 by T1. But remember, T1 and T2 are the time taken by 2 people A and B respectively after meeting point. That word after meeting point is the most important thing there. After meeting point to reach their respective destinations. And if A has to meet B at some point, from the starting point till the meeting point, how much time did A take? He has taken a time of T hours and that T is proved as root of T1 into T2. Similarly, from the starting point of B till the meeting point, if B has to travel from the starting point till the meeting point, how much time B has taken? He has also taken time of T hours and that T is once again given as root of T1 into T2. I hope you are super clear with the concept. I have spent so much of time in explaining this concept because I know that if you know this concept, the next 3 to 4 problems are like this. I want that to happen and I want you people to remember this concept also. I hope it is very clear for all the students listening to the class. Next question. Now see here, this is your Virgilite 2018 main question. But you can saw these questions very fast and very easily right now because we know the meeting point concept already by now. Now see here, the question says, A and B started their journeys from X to Y and Y to X. That means basically they both are actually traveling towards each other. After crossing each other, this is the most important point in the statement. After crossing each other, A and B completed the remaining parts of their journey in 61 by 8 hours and 8 hours respectively. That means basically 61 by 8 hours is the time taken by A to reach his respective destination. That we called it as T1 in our concept. So T1 is, it is 49 by 8 hours. And 8 hours is the time taken by B to reach the destination after meeting A and that we represented as T2 in the concept what we had discussed. So we know the value of T1 and T2 and it's also given that if the speed of B is 28 km/h, second person's speed is also given in the question as 28 km/h. Find the speed of A. Now because we know that concept, it's so simple. S1 by S2 is nothing but equal to square root of T2 divided by T1. So S1 we are calculating, S2 is nothing but equal to SB in this question. So it is 28 square root of T2 by T1. T2 is nothing but 8, T1 is nothing but 49 divided by 8, that divided by will go to the numerator. So I can simplify this as 8 square under the square root is 8, 49 square root is 7. 7 into 1, 7 into 4. This 4 cross multiply with 8. So the speed of the first person A is 4 into 8, which is 32 km/h, which is option B. You can solve this kind of question so fast and so easily with knowing the concept of meeting point whatever we have already discussed. Now see the next question. Next question is also very, very much similar to the previous question what we have discussed. The question says, 2 trains Kolkata male and Bombay male. There are 2 trains which are Kolkata male and Bombay male start at the same time. That is the concept what we have discussed earlier. They both are starting at the same time from stations Kolkata and Mumbai respectively towards each other. They both are traveling towards each other from 2 different destinations or the places. After passing each other, the most important point once again is after passing each other. That means basically after the meeting point, they take 8 hours and 32 minutes. So T1 value is given as 8 hours and 32 minutes. 8 hours and 32 minutes is nothing but, 8 hours is nothing but 8 into 60 minutes, 480 minutes. 480 minutes plus 32 minutes, it is nothing but 512 minutes, right? It is 512, 12 minutes. Similarly, 14 hours and 42 minutes to reach Mumbai and Kolkata respectively. T2 value is given as 14 hours and 42 minutes. 14 into 60 is nothing but 840 plus 42. 882 minutes is the value of T2 which they have given in the question. I hope you are understanding what is the meaning of T1, what is the meaning of T2, which I have very clearly explained in the concept. Now, the question also says, if the Kolkata male is moving at the speed of 105 km/h, first train is Kolkata male, so I will call that as S1. S1 is given in the question as 105 km/h. Find the speed of Bombay train, that is nothing but S2 they are asking. It's a very simple question once again because we know the values of everything whatever which is given. So S1 by S2 is nothing but square root of T2 divided by T1, right? Square root of T2 divided by T1. So S1, S1 is nothing but, S1 is nothing but, okay. So what is that, okay, S1 is nothing but 105 divided by S2 is nothing but equal to square root of, T2 is nothing but how much? T2 is nothing but 882. T2 is 882 minutes divided by T1. T1 is nothing but 512 minutes. You should simplify that. The only thing which is extra in this question is little bit of simplification. The moment you simplify, it becomes very easy. 2 into 256 is 512. 2 into 441 is 882. And we know that 105 divided by S2 is equal to square root of 441 is 21. Square root of 256 is 16. 21 into 5 is nothing but 105. 16 into 5 is 80. Answer for this question is, the speed of Bombay male train can be easily found out as 80 km/h, which is option B by using the meeting point concept what we have already discussed. That is the reason I spent almost 19 to 20 minutes in explaining you the meeting point concept so elaborately. So that you will solve all these questions in the super faster way like the way the speed of 2 trains are moving at a faster pace. I hope these 2 questions are very clear for all the students listening to the class. See the next question. Now see the next question. Question says, 2 persons Ram and Sharm start simultaneously in the opposite direction from 2 points A and B at 9 AM. So basically 2 people are starting at the same time. Those 2 people are moving in the opposite direction towards each other and they are starting simultaneously, that means same time. Now, each of them runs towards starting point of other person. That means Ram will actually move towards the starting point of Sharm. Sharm will actually move towards the starting point of Ram. Now, after crossing each other, the most important statement once again came for us. After crossing each other, Ram took 80 minutes and Sharm took 45 minutes to reach their destinations. That means very clearly that values of T1 and T2 are given in the question as 80 minutes and 45 minutes. T1 value is 80 minutes in the question. T2 value, T1 and T2 are the time taken by Ram and Sharm to reach their respective destinations after meeting or after crossing each other. So we came to know the values of T1 and T2. At what time will they meet each other is the question. That means from the starting point, this is where Ram is present right now. This is where Sharm is present right now. Ram and Sharm are moving towards each other like this. They are moving, they are moving, they are moving. Like this, they both actually met at some point. Now this is the meeting point. How much time has Ram taken to travel from his starting point to the meeting point? Or how much time has Sharm taken to reach from starting point of Sharm to the meeting point? Both the time are same because the time is constant. And that time we have already calculated in our concept once again as T. That T value is given as square root of T1 into T2. The proof was also very beautifully explained in the concept. Square root of, T1 value is 80 and T2 value is 45. So 80 into 45, 45 into 2 is nothing but 90. 45 into 80 is 360. So 360 and 45 into, 80 360, 45 into 80 is 3600. That means time taken by both the people to meet from their starting point. Square root of 3600 is 60 minutes. 60 minutes means from 9 o'clock, they both are starting exactly at 9 o'clock from their starting point. And after starting at 9 o'clock, they traveled for 60 minutes. That means they traveled for 1 hour and they both met. That means they both met at 9 o'clock plus 1 hour. 9 o'clock in the morning is what they both have met is the answer. Answer for this question is 10 AM which is option B. I hope it is very clear about what we have discussed in the concept and what we are solving in last 3 problems also. Next question, again pretty much similar kind of question. See the question, P and Q start running simultaneously, 1 from point A and B and the second from point B and A. That means basically they are running towards each other in the opposite direction. P is the speed, 6 by 5th of Q's speed. Speed of P is 6 by 5 times of speed of Q. That means we can say that the speed of P divided by speed of Q, the ratio is nothing but 63 to 5. This we can easily predict. Now, the question is, if after crossing Q, that means after they both are met and both are actually moving towards their destination after meeting, that is what they have given. If after crossing each other, P takes 2 and a half hours to reach B, that is nothing but the time taken by P. And how much time that Q take to reach A after crossing P? That means time taken by P is nothing but 2 and a half hours, which is 5 by 2 hours. Time taken by Q is nothing but how much they have asked in the question. Now it's a very simple question. Now it's a very simple explanation once again. Speed of P divided by speed of Q is nothing but equal to square root of time taken by Q divided by time taken by P. Whatever speed ratio you have written on the left hand side, reverse it and write it as the time ratio on the right hand side along with the square root. This is after meeting. Now, we know that speed of P divided by speed of Q is nothing but six divided by five which we have already calculated. Is equal to square root of time taken by Q, we don't know. Time taken by P is nothing but five divided by two, that two will come to the right hand side, sorry numerator, it will come to the numerator. Now, if I want to remove the square root, square it on both sides. Six by five becomes thirty six by twenty five and the right hand side becomes two times of T Q divided by five. Five into five is twenty five, two into eighteen is thirty six. So time taken by Q is nothing but eighteen divided by five. Eighteen divided by five hours or it is nothing but three point six hours. So eighteen divided by five is nothing but three divide, three point six hours. Or it is nothing but three hours and zero point six hours is nothing but. Zero point six into sixty minutes which is nothing but thirty six minutes. So time taken by Q after meeting to reach his destination is three hours and thirty six minutes. Which is option A. I hope you are super clear with the concept and also the problems based on those concept. I think everything should be very, very beautifully understood till this point of time for you people. Next question, two trains P and Q start their journey from Delhi and Kanpur respectively towards each other. Now if you really want, I will write the diagram also. Now, there are two places, this place is nothing but place called as Delhi. And there is another place, nothing but a place called as Kanpur, right? This is what they have given in the question, now see here. And they are saying that two trains P and Q start their journey from Delhi and Kanpur. Now, P is starting from Delhi, moving towards Kanpur, Q is starting from Kanpur, moving towards Delhi. Now, P is traveling like this, after some point it will meet Q. Q is also traveling from Kanpur, after some point it will meet P, right? So P and Q basically are meeting after some distance, we don't know after how much distance, how much time, nothing is known till this point. Now, this is where P is traveling, this is where Q is traveling. Now read the next statement, when they will cross each other, that means this is the point they will cross each other. Then time P and Q will take twenty five hours and sixteen hours respectively to reach their destination. That means P, this is the meeting point, P will continue to travel and reach Kanpur. And this time is nothing but time T one, it is given as twenty five hours in the question, I hope you are clear. Q, Q has also met here, right? Q has also met here, Q has met the train P and it will continue to travel and reach Delhi like this. And this time taken is T two, it is given in the question as sixteen hours, I hope you are clear now. It is also said that the speed of train Q is forty kilometers per hour. The speed of train Q, it, this speed is given in the question as forty kilometers per hour. But we don't know the speed of train P, but the question is not asking you to find the speed of train P actually. It is actually asking you to find the distance between these two points of Delhi and Kanpur. So we can say that speed of train P divided by speed of train Q is nothing but. T two divided by T one, speed of train P we don't know, speed of train Q is forty. T two by T one is nothing but sixteen divided by twenty five, sixteen divided by twenty five is nothing but four divided by five. Five into one, five into eight, eight cross multiplied with four. Speed of train P we came to know as thirty two kilometers per hour. What is the reason behind calculating speed of train P, you will understand in a minute or so. Speed of train P also we came to know right now as thirty two kilometers per hour. Now let me use a different color so that it will be super clear for you. Now see here, find the distance between Delhi and Kanpur is the question. Now, can I say that, can I say that distance is nothing but equal to speed into time, right? Distance is nothing but equal to speed into time. Now, they are both meeting at this point, right? They both are meeting at this point. Now, after meeting at that particular point, I can say that. Train P will continue traveling like this to reach Kanpur. And train P will travel with a speed of thirty two kilometers per hour and it will take twenty five hours. Speed is thirty two, time taken is twenty five. So distance traveled from train P to travel from meeting point to Kanpur is thirty two into twenty five. So one of the distances, it is thirty two into twenty five, I hope you are very beautifully understanding. Similarly, exactly similarly, after meeting, after meeting. Train Q will continue to travel like this and train Q will reach the Delhi, right? Train Q will reach Delhi and while train Q is traveling like this, it is traveling at a speed of forty kilometers per hour. And it is totally taking sixteen hours. That means the distance traveled by train Q from the meeting point till Delhi is forty into sixteen. So add those two distances to get the final answer of the distance, simple, so simple, it is so simple as you can think. So thirty two into twenty five or you can directly use the concept of unit digit if you really want to. So, see here, two into five will end with zero, zero into six will end with zero, zero plus zero, answer should end with zero. That means option B and option D are ruled out, either it should be one four four zero or it should be one six eight zero, any one should be the answer. Twenty five into thirty is seven hundred and fifty, twenty five into two is fifty. So this is eight hundred, right? This is eight hundred plus sixteen into four is sixty four, so it is six forty, eight hundred plus six forty. Answer is total distance from Delhi to Kanpur is thousand four hundred and forty kilometers which is option A. I hope you are very, very clear with the meeting point concept. And all the five problems which we have solved using the beautiful concept of meeting point.